Todd, did you get a chance to go through with that notification list?
I did, and I am going to clear them. Thank you.
Okay.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's get started. Ahmed, why don't you go ahead, please?
Uh, he has done. So like yesterday, I sent Todd the notification, all the notification list apart from chat. So today I prepare uh, all the chat notifications uh, list and added the participant also there. Um, there, then after I work on writing test cases, since I did not see any uh, work uh, from anyone requested. Okay? And after, before the stand up, I got a script from Jerry, so I was going through it and I may want to run that script.
Okay, what was that script?
So like Jerry will explain more about it. So it will, when you someone tag, you'll get SMS when someone appear in the photo, right Jerry?
Yeah, so the, uh, John, this is the script to send the SMSs to people that say you got tagged in a photo from the event.
Mm-hmm.
So I gave him it basically all the parameters he needs and he'll just be on standby whenever it's time to send out those SMSs when the photos get uploaded.
Okay, I wanna get Danny involved in that. He's not on the call yet, but um.
Yeah, we chatted last night about that, about what, what he wanted in that script and uh, he went, he said it looks good, so.
Okay, um, looks like he just jumped in, so. What's, what's Danny's role then in that?
Uh, pretty much he's gonna be the one that's gonna tell, um, hey Danny, uh, just to catch you up, I got that script ready that we're gonna hand off to emit to run for those when they're done uploading. Um, what you're gonna need to give him is you're gonna have to tell him like the SMS that he wants sent. I gave you, I gave him the two that you gave me. Um, and he's just gonna need to know like a start and end time for the event.
Okay, how can we test it in advance?
We did, um. Ahmed, uh, Danny, if you wanna give Ahmed your phone number?
He's got it.
He can see what the SMS would look like.
Okay.
Yeah, send it to me. Very, I have your phone number, let me. It is your same phone number now, what I have earlier?
Yes.
Let me send you. Nine one six. One, nine one six, two seven six.
Yep.
Four three double five.
Mm-hmm. Hey John, real quick on the billboard mockup, do you want the guy in the bill, in the photo or no, no person, just the, the door?
Um. Do the whole, with the person there and everything.
Okay.
This is for the which billboard?
The one that we're gonna put on J Street.
Oh, um. I don't know. He's like getting started on that right now?
Well, we should have Shontel mock it up. He gave me the sizing and everything and how to design it. And he said that if we can get it to him really quickly, he can get it up.
Okay, yeah, let's mock it up how it is, cuz we can make that a mural also anywhere.
Okay.
Uh.
It'd be good to be able to mock it up with and without the person. I kinda wanna see what it looks like as in perspective.
So the link is really long? Is there a way to shorten the link?
Uh. So that's our, that's our dynamic URL. I mean, how would you want it shortened?
I mean, it'd just be so much better if it was like, there's just, there's just a lot of stuff in it, right? Campaign group dot PHP, some code equals nine one six nights, like.
Okay, um.
If it was like, getout.circles.com slash it's better in here. Uh, or, or sorry, you were spotted in a photo or um, any, anything shorter than what it is.
Hmm. Okay, um. I think I, I think this link works. Let me, let me try something. Think I got a shorter version that I worked on, but let me see if that works as a dynamic link too.
Okay.
Okay, um. Let me go to Amin, I've got some questions.
Yep.
Um, thanks for it. Hey Amin, how's it going? Um, I've been playing with a new build. Um. Did you, were you not able to get that download?
No, no, like it's like it was half done.
Okay, so what, it's not real simple?
No, it's, yeah, it's not just a button because um, there's uh, permissions involved there and when in, when there's permissions, you have to make sure things go on as expected.
Okay, also, I think I see a bug that I didn't see in a previous build, but maybe I hope it's back in. I doubt it is because um, I wanna ship this one, but if you were to go to uh, the menu, you know, where you um, can add or remove people in your chat.
Okay.
And you know, in this version, you can now, with notifications, you can pause and silence notifications. You can also select if you want to only get notifications from your friends or from everyone.
Mm-hmm.
For me, when I choose everyone and then try and hit confirm, nothing happens.
Okay, I mean, I'll change it.
So yeah, is it doing that for you? And Danny, did you check?
It's had like this exclusive only to this build. The thing is like, um, we did not really touch the screen.
Actually, I'm trying to think if this was even in the last build. It's, it's uh, it's pretty new.
So like the font for the button there, it's the color, I'm not sure.
It's gray? You wanna show me?
Yeah.
Right, but when you slide it over to everyone, depends on what chat you're in, but.
I'm talking about screen, this is the everyone, so.
Yeah, slide it to friends. And then try.
Oh yeah, I see, okay. I thought it's.
Yeah, try hitting confirm.
My, whatever I select here?
Yeah, I didn't select any of those, uh, but I'll show you what I did. Go ahead and hit, hit confirm. Does it do anything? Yeah, it's, so you, it's, oh wait, it did confirm. Go to a chat, um. It might have to do with the chat. Let me see which one I mean. Jerry, with the Good Vibes Club, is there? Here, let me just send this to you, Amin, you'll see what I mean. I'm not sure if I'm doing something different, but I didn't, I did not select any of those uh, timeframes. It's just the everyone slider. Is the Good Vibes Club restricted to any, like just people you're following for notifications, Jerry? Is that only the Never Bored Club?
I think it was just the Never Bored Club right now.
Okay, so I thought so. Okay, try again with um, that group, do the large group test. And then, okay. And then go to friends and then hit confirm.
Just like that.
Yeah, okay, so you're getting the same. No, it did work.
I mean, it takes like a second and a jump for the musician to kick in, but like, uh.
If you see on mine, it's like not at all.
Get to the, so it's inside. Um.
Uh, let me try again.
Oh, let me see if there's a session play there, so. It's going, so it's.
I mean, I could, I could recreate it over and over, right?
Okay.
I had that good deal. That was just one screen record. I'm gonna try again. For, for me, my default one starts on friends. Maybe that's part of the problem. Yours started on everyone.
Yeah, correct. Um, let me see.
Could you go to production?
Uh, like to try some production, maybe, yeah. Let me, let me switch to this production.
Yeah, cuz it's a hundred percent of the time for me right now. I'm just, I'm doing it again now.
Okay, yeah, I missed it then.
Does something need to be deployed for that, Jerry?
Uh, for what?
What you just saw on the screen, the slider?
I was not looking at the slider, sorry. What, what are?
You know how you can pause notifications, um, or silence notifications, but you can also choose if you wanna see them from everyone or just friends?
Yeah, that gotta be deployed.
Oh, that's, never mind, I mean, that's probably.
This is, this is in a production, but yeah. Let, let me just.
Okay.
I pushed that thing for the, the profile page, but let me just go ahead now. I got some time and see if we can push everything up to production.
Okay, yeah, if you go to the Never Bored Club or the Good Vibes Club, or EX, probably any of these will be the same situation. But it's, it sounds like it just needs a backend deploy.
Yeah, okay, let's just, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a backend, yeah.
I'm all right, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna push everything up to push everything up to product.
Cool. Okay. Well, false alarm on that one. Um. Good, cuz Danny, did those build to get approved yet?
Let me check. I have not received notification, so I'm gonna say no.
Okay. Um, okay, so we don't need to worry about that one. I mean, um. What else uh, did you have going on yesterday?
Um, yesterday I finished working on the um, the rethink button from onboarding. So if a user presses on the rethink button, you know, it's L T, it will be taken back to the other step where we're gonna import his uh.
That, is that live? Sorry, cut you off. Is that live?
It is, it is in.
I actually saw another, another user in session replay I saw yesterday, same thing. Changed their mind in onboarding. And went, went to settings. So it's happened, which is great that it's happened, meaning the, all the work there, all that design um, and behavioral stuff is working. But um, obviously we need the it to function. So I, I actually didn't test it. I need to test it with, um. Can I just, I can do it with it. I'd probably need to do it with a phone that's never shared contacts, right?
Um. I was testing it with this here where I already shared contacts. I think it's fine, but it will be more like, uh. If you like, if a phone you never shared contacts with, we're gonna be like, uh. We're gonna be like sure a hundred percent that it's working or not, like there's nothing else interesting because we, we did it exactly for this case.
Right, okay, I'm gonna do that right now. I got another phone. Okay, so you got that implemented, right? Everything on your end?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna test that. What else did uh, did you have going on?
We did some fixes, um, while we were like on the call yesterday. Um. Oh, yeah. Um, also like where Wales works, uh, yeah, like wherever I was working on, um. Like the open words that I remember. Um, yeah, uh, what else? Like, uh, we added the levels and the streak deep link. Also. Mm-hmm.
Okay, so is that one of the things you're deploying, Jerry? The levels and streak screen, the deep link for it?
Yeah, if it, if it was in develop on the backend, it should be getting pushed now.
Okay. Okay, cool. Um. I'd like to test that too, Jerry. Is there a way for you to send a notification to one of our phones?
Um, sure, I can do it, or if you want to admit to do it, I don't know.
Yeah. Um, Todd, will you work with Amit on that and get, and test the notification for your streak is burning out? Make sure it links you to your streak screen and then the um, what was the other one for the reward of the level screen? Is that right, Amin?
Yeah, the levels and the streaks.
Yeah, the levels and the streaks. So there's a one. Yeah, there's a notification. I think there's more than one about leveling up. Those should take you to the level screen. Is that all deployed, Jerry? It's ready to go?
Uh.
Let me get a few more minutes. Okay, what, uh, what else, Amin?
Um, yeah, also like, uh, fix that navigation issue, like the buttons on the Android. Your way to close in, um, this, yeah. What did they fix there? Like, like the brush we fixed, I still did not work on where it's gonna move things uh, to the top if there's no space when the uh, keyboard is visible. Well, we did the brush we fixed, she's.
Um. Let me tell Todd one more thing to test on the Android FE.
Mm-hmm.
Will you test um, onboarding and see if the buttons are no longer blocking inputs?
Yeah, I did have a screenshot for you.
What was that?
Um, yeah, I did. Uh, I have um, a screenshot for you. It's, it's mostly okay.
On the FE?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'll send a screenshot so you know that what I'm looking at.
Okay, I mean, is it acceptable?
Um, I, I think it is. It's a, things are a little crowded, but it's, I don't, it's not overlapping.
Okay, yeah. It's a real.
It's acceptable.
Okay. It's not a lot of people have that phone. Okay, cool. Um, all right. And then um, what else are you saying there, Amin?
Yeah, then the save button, like uh, it's out of there, so we gotta work on it more. And yeah, today I couldn't really work on it in my morning. Um, yesterday I had this toothache. I couldn't sleep the whole night, so I was just trying to have some sleep today's morning.
Hmm. Do you have a dentist appointment?
Yeah, where, um, is like, um, the root canal, it's like in, in like, um, in vein. So it needs to be extracted and it cannot do it right now in like, it will need till like five days or something like that, then I.
Oh.
Yeah.
Um, do you have antibiotics?
Yeah, I took the antibiotics, also some pain uh, relief, so.
The antibiotics will get the pain under control, but it takes like probably a good twenty-four hours.
Yeah. So like from an hour to an hour, it's like it's pain time. I feel like pain for five minutes, then it goes away.
Ah.
Yeah.
That's hard to concentrate. Okay, no worries, um. I'm making a lot of good progress this week, so, um. I really, I wanna just uh, clean up a few things actually, just and test a lot of stuff. Are, are you good to uh, put in a little more time? Cuz I'm not gonna really be too available. Actually, I'll be available the first half of the day tomorrow. Jerry's gonna be off. Jerry's getting married this weekend. We're flying out to go see him and celebrate, but um, that means we're gonna have a limited time tomorrow.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm available, yeah. It's fine, I can, I can go, yeah.
Oh, cool, good, good. All right. Well, um, the app is going super smooth, like, um. Jerry, did, you know, I know you did a lot of uh, optimizing on the photos, the memory issues and then um, all the front end optimizations you've, you've done, I mean, and it smells, not here, but he's done a lot of stuff where I know you guys are always looking at the best practices instead of doing hacky kind of stuff. It's really paying off. The app is
Yeah.
is so, so smooth and feels zippy, like even, even some of the stuff that used to be slow going between profiles, like from Circle of Trust profiles real fast. I could not get the phone to slow down, so it's going great.
It, yeah, it's, it's, um. For me, you know, with all these test phones that I have, using this Mint Mobile service, which be limited on, on data. Um. At first, using those phones was absolutely miserable. And I'm pretty sure it has something to do with those, the cloudinary uh, photos and whatnot. Taking up all the bandwidth and, and usage on the phones. Now, like I've been, you know, still testing with these phones, uh, not on wifi, using Mint Mobile. And it's totally normal. There's no slow downs or anything. Yeah, it's great. It works really well on these little phones.
Fantastic, yeah, it's getting better and better every day and we're getting so many people jumping in to different communities and chats and sharing and wanting to invest and inviting their friends and all the stuff we've done around the logic to match people with suggestions of people they know is working really well. Like I see everybody, not everybody, but I see just a much larger percentage of people stopping what they're doing and onboarding at the Circle of Trust screen and trying to add more than eight people. Like they'll usually, they'll hit their limit. So that's great, like they're, yeah, they're searching for their friends. And then they're like, they're seeing their friends in the list and they're going add, 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 and then they're like, oh, I can't have more. And, and these, a lot of these times, this is a session replay, people I don't even know, so, um. They're just friends of friends of friends and have no connection to any of, of uh, the founders or any of the developers, anything. Just using it part of the community as intended, sharing it and growing it, so. I feel like we're, we're really coming through this year. Between now and the end of the year, I still have this, this ambition to get to a million users. And we have a lot of things that are lining up for that to work, so, um. Anyway, just wanted to pat everyone on the back. Everyone's doing really great.
Great job, and you too, John. You're, you're feeling it now. Damn, all this. Don't know how you do it, man. I couldn't do it.
I'm enjoying it. You know, I might sound like I'm frustrated ninety percent of the time, but I, I really do enjoy work. I love working with this team. And um, wouldn't trade anybody on here for anybody in the world. So that, that's a lot of motivation for me, cuz I, I wanna be my best, cuz I see everyone else doing their best. So, um, yeah, we're in a good spot. I think we're in a, I think we're gonna really make a big mark on the world, like in the coming months. I think people all across, at least this country for sure, and probably soon, the world will be discussing circles. Like in this, in this community, in Sacramento. It's everywhere. Like I keep, people keep messaging me and be like, dude, I was at the gym and four, four different people were like, are you in circles yet? Are you in circles yet? And it's like crazy how many people are talking about the Circles app in this, in this community, so we can scale this now to other cities. We got actual formula development, so, yeah. Go good. What's up, Ahmed?
Uh, so I want to say, once it will come into news now, that people of India will become crazy about US app.
Is that right? Which, which apps are they getting crazy about?
Uh, that like X, Twitter, all the people are here using lots of, like all the US app, whatever is published in the US and people are using here lots of that.
Is that kind of a new, newer trend?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. We have been getting a lot more downloads in India too, so. Huh, I wonder, um, would you, how many, what, what do you think the percentage of population that speak English in India is?
Yeah. Eighty percent people are speaking and understanding English.
Eighty percent?
Yes.
Whoa. That's more English speakers than live in our whole country.
Yeah, so only rural area people know, they don't understand English. They are watching US movie, they are watching Hollywood movie, they are watching, you, you, uh, watching all English song here.
Is that right?
Yeah, we have two hundred seventy users with plus ninety-one codes.
Huh, and that number's been growing. I mean, there's over a billion people in India.
Correct. One point four billion people.
One point four billion people. I mean, the United States just has the point four.
You guys are catching up to China quick.
Not on par, they've been neck and neck there. Yeah, so if there's eighty percent speaking English, that's a good opportunity for a lot of growth. I didn't realize it was that high um, speakers of English, so huh, that's good to know. Um, well, maybe Circles will be the next new thing for uh, for your country and countries all around. Definitely for our communities, it's clear that there's a buzz. And so, yeah, we're just gonna keep building on that.
There, there's that guy in the groups from, I think he's from Ghana. He's like, oh, how can I get Circles out to everyone? Everyone's gonna be using it.
That's awesome. I mean, yeah, the people are just like, I just hear it constantly, like I love this app. I don't use Facebook anymore. I only use Circles. I love the positivity, so it's really exciting. Um. Next, uh, let's see, there's there's quite a few little things I wanna go through. I messaged Jerry, I messaged you a couple of things, right?
You, you messaged me about the, the location stuff. I figured we could break off into that after, cuz it might, it might be a pretty big rabbit hole, but
We can do that.
Everything should be deployed, that, that you wanna deploy.
Okay, cool. Um, so that means Todd can test uh, those notifications now, to make sure they deep link properly.
Yeah, um, Ahmed, if you wanna work with Todd and sending him like the notifications, you update it to his phone, making sure he gets it, so.
Other thing I wanted to discuss with Amin, if you could help me out, um, to delegate some tasks to, um, Sarav's gonna come back, um, hopefully next week, part-time. And, um, I had come up with a couple just kind of bug fixes, but Amin, is there? Is there anything you can think of? I know you have a lot of notes and a lot stacking up, but, um. Where you think Sarav might be able to jump in?
Uh, yeah, there's some few where things are simpler, they're not complex or anything. They're like, and then in, independent task. Where you will not like really understand the context, you can just go and fix it. And this.
Okay, that'd be perfect. Maybe keep, um, keep those in mind and what I'll do is, um. I haven't talked to him directly yet. Um, I've just been going through Ahmed, but when, when I do talk to him and nail down his timelines and stuff, I'll, I'll just have him reach out to you. Um, is that, that'll probably be easiest.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, you could point him in the right direction on some of that. Okay, cool. Um. Let me see what else next.
One more thing, uh, that widget guy person wants to talk to you guys yesterday.
Oh yeah, that's right. Can you, um, you could have him text me? Or we could do like a Google meets or something like that?
Google meet, uh, okay, today he's traveling, so my, he will be available on Monday.
Okay, Monday I'm traveling.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe, um, maybe Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Um. Probably before stand-up on Tuesday would be good. I'm trying to plan for that, tentatively. Um. Let's see.
No, John, I did have in my, um, my Slack messages was just some suggestions I have from hovering over Diana's family.
That's right, I was just looking at that actually.
Yeah, it worked there. Her aunt's onboarding worked really good. She did not allow contacts. She was like, I'm gonna allow my contacts later.
Mm-hmm.
But that like worked really good for the, all the suggestions.
Awesome, yeah, I've noticed that being very accurate for so many different people, so many different circles of friends, so, um. That work's really paid off. I know we spent a lot of time in the weeds on that stuff to get it tweaked, but it's really, it's working really well. It's great. Um, yeah, some of those changes you're suggesting, I'm gonna I'm gonna get a couple more updates and then decide that, you know, who best to go with that. Sarav actually might be good on a couple of those, cuz they're not too difficult. Um. Let me think of what else I wanna jump to. So Todd, I see your, uh, you have a few things here too in development. Um. Yeah, did you get some of this cleared up on, remember when you entered the phone number for different phones?
Uh, remind me? Sorry.
The link that was, um, for the invite link?
Oh, yeah, I sent those to Jerry when, when we were going, when I was showing you that. And uh, he was explaining how that was expected and working as it should.
Okay. Okay, so it's, it's all good there?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Got it, um. Okay, let's see, what Wells? Is Wells here? I sent you a couple, um.
So.
Yes.
Sorry, hold on one second. What was that on it?
I need to send.
You're kinda cutting out.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have to send notification to Todd for a streak burning, correct?
Yeah, streak's burning out. And then also the levels one, like to take you to the, um, there's one, I think it takes you rewards and one that takes you to the level screen.
Or store like.
Yeah, there actually is three. Yeah, there actually is three. And I think one of them was already done days ago. So there's one that takes you to the level screen, one takes you rewards or one that takes you to streak screen. Maybe, yeah, I mean, we could look at it together because with Wells on this that I wanted to share with Wells last night, but I would, I would like to get your input. Could you go to? A profile for. I think a movie? This one looks good. Okay, so and then scroll down to where it says trusted. And even here, is it? Okay, that one looks good. Maybe it's just for games. Wells, did you go to, go ahead and go to a game? I mean, Wells, was it, did you notice if it was on any other profiles?
I actually couldn't get to reproduce that yet in any profile.
Uh, I think maybe it's on game. Did you try games?
I don't think so.
That's maybe where it's happening. It's not cut off as bad there. That one there where it says share a trust tip. Yeah, that one's overlapping. And then go to the share button, I mean. Oh, look, it's moved.
Indeed.
Why would it move? Because it, when you fir, when you first loaded this, the button was a, was not colliding with the line. Look at that. That's interesting. Hey, I mean, you might be on mute, but um.
Yeah, I was, I mean, uh, I don't think it was the first time it wasn't here. It was always here, like not always like this time. When I just arrived here, it did not move. It just started like this.
No, go back and come, if you could scroll, actually, don't go back. Well, you can, but scroll to the bottom. Look, see, you can see the whole bottom of it there and then it just.
Oh, yeah, when it's cropped?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it should not even be here. It should be centered.
Um, Wells, do you think, do you need any assistance on this or? You feel like you got it pretty straightforward?
Yep.
Okay.
Might be something specific to the, to the, to the games profile handler. So I'm not sure, even if the changes I made actually affected this.
Yeah, now that I see that it wasn't on the movies and shit, for some reason I thought it was also on movies and shows. But yeah, I think it. Oh, because I was worried maybe there's something more with, um, I know you had to do some creative positioning of that share button. Because it's a lot of, didn't you work on that like a few months ago?
Never touched it.
Maybe Amin worked on it.
Or it's me. Like I've touched it. Worked on it, uh, some, but I think it might be us, man.
Okay. Okay, so do you have any questions about it, Wells, or does you feel like it's pretty straightforward?
Yeah, no, we're good. We'll, we'll investigate it.
Okay, and then the hours? Can you get that?
Oh, I'll make that clickable.
Because otherwise it's really hard to tap on the little show. And then, um, so what else did you have going on?
Yeah, a bunch of cool stuff. In fact, let me share my screen with you. Uh, is Danny here?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's up? Sorry, I was on the phone.
So. You know, I want to show you something. So Danny requested me last night if, um, uh, is it possible for me to? Uh, get a report in template dude showing the amount of favorites that have a trusted added as a photo this month. Yeah. So regarding that, let me share here.
Yeah, I couldn't pull it easily because it's a, it's a, uh, property.
Exactly. And I did some, some variations on that. So I did not only bring in some intel regarding the favorites that has a photo added, but also about. Where is it? Uh, favorites that have trust tips in general. And uh, separating uh, for place and entertainment. So here we have the places and we can add in here the intel for entertainment as well. Switch them. So we have some, some interesting stuff to look into here.
Okay, please send me a link to that report. I'm gonna filter it by like weekly and monthly. That's a daily chart, right?
Yeah, and um, you can on the top here go. So right now I'm seeing the last ninety days. So we can see it on a monthly basis. And it is really interesting to see that, for example, in here, there is a more general on the shows, all favorites with trust tips. We can see all the favorites that don't have a trust tips and the one that has. So. In general, people tend to share it with trust tips more than with. And.
Yeah, it's a little faster. Okay. Yeah, if you could just send me a link to that report, that's all I needed was the, the report created in a way that. Was easy to read. So it looks like you just added the trust tip added property there, which is helpful. So great.
And.
Is it, um. I want to understand this graph. So. What's the number on the left? Goes zero, twenty, forty, sixty?
These are unique events. So. Unique favorites. Uh, with trusted added in green and favorites without trust tips in red.
I, I, are those unique users or unique events?
Unique events. By unique users.
Unique users, I think.
No, it is unique events.
Okay, what's the event totals then? Click event totals over there.
Yeah, because I think this is proportional. It's up a hundred and eighty-three percent, right, since February twenty eighth? It looks like, um.
Uh, where did you see event totals, Danny?
On the left hand side, click the over, lower.
Lower?
Yeah, uh, hover over that number of events triggered per day. Okay, hover over the little, uh, like information button there.
Later information button?
Measured, next to measured as.
Next to measured as? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there was no hover. Just a quick, okay.
Yeah, so go hover over uniques real quick. That's how many unique users triggered the events per day. So that's. It's event totals that is the, is more representative of what we're trying to look at right now. And then if you can change the daily, I don't want to look at it daily really. It's switch it from daily to monthly.
And. That, that right? Okay, okay, daily.
Drop that to monthly.
Okay, okay.
And then hit like, yeah, six months is good. So that's, that's a chart I wanted to see right, right here.
Over a thousand percent.
So now we're seeing, you know, thirty-four hundred favorites in April and about half of them are adding some kind of trust tip. And then you can see that with the never board club a bit more engaged and understanding the product a bit more, they're making more of an investment because you see the. The photos added going up, even though the total amount of favorites is starting, is, is dipping a little bit. And that's just happening because when the rad audience came in in April, they were just adding a bunch of favorites. Without, you know, the younger people maybe making more of an investment as they get more attached to the product.
You know, if they favorite rad or a podcast, you can't even add a photo. So it's not that they wouldn't have added a photo. But you can't, entertainment category, so a little bit of, um, a handicap there too. So, but all in all. Tremendous growth. Look at that.
Yeah, and this is, um, um, favorites. That had a photo versus ones that don't have. So four K doesn't have a photo and three hundred have.
Okay. From.
The last one was trust tips in general and this one is photos.
Exactly. I figured, I figured it would be useful also to know the trust tips in general. That's why I made the other one also. And in here. Let me, let me try this as well because it seems really cool. Uh, let me get it monthly. And then all of them. Okay, so here in this one, we have a separation on, um, trusted added. Based on entity type. So places versus entertainment. So we see here that this bottom one is. Uh, entertainment.
Danny, do you, do you want to work on the side with, with Wells?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, I was just looking at, I wanted to get like a, a feel for it. And this, having this report created like he's done it, I know how to read it and then.
Yeah, this is fantastic. Look at the growth. That's, that's really incredible. And imagine if we keep trending in this way, compounding the growth on top of growth. We won't take long to be there. Um, we've got some plans to expand outside of. Our main, our core area. So yeah, I'd like to study this with you too. So yeah, pull as much of you can, as you can from here and maybe we should go over it together later.
Cool.
This is great. Thanks, Wells.
Thanks, Wells.
Thank you.
What else do you have working on today?
Yeah, and also I have other news. So yesterday before the next build. Uh, these last five PRs were merged. So the. The map pins that Jerry, uh, find out that we could optimize should be. On the optimized version for the next QA deal we have. Yeah, also the profile title that was white and, and some other stuff regarding the, the font should be fixed as well.
Okay. Yesterday's build?
Yeah, and um, we temporarily remove the miles away from the card.
Oh, yeah.
That appeared due to the data coming in from the backend. And we have the profile opening hour. So it shows if it's open hour, if it's closed. And I will, um, be improving the tapable area of this next. Open a PDF soon.
Okay, good.
And right now I am investigating the issue that you pointed out regarding the. The share a trust tip clipping in and the share being here in the bottom. I couldn't reproduce it. So I was investigating how to. And now that I know that it's specifically to the games, it helps my work a lot. So we'll. Focus on that and go straight out to the games and see what's happening there regarding the share and the, the clip here in the bottom.
Cool.
Yeah, and besides that, I have a bunch of other stuff to be working in, in here for many, many other stuff.
Okay, so good. Yeah, it's looking really good though. Like, I really like this. Off-white font now for the feeds. They look a lot more, um. Just, uh, there's not as much clash of colors, so. Easier on the eyes. Um, I think the badges saves and photos. Tabs.
Could be like that.
Are they not? No, I think they're, I, I don't think they're white, are they?
Yeah, they are.
Is it? Okay. Sometimes my eyes check me. Yeah, when I, I got, always have to turn my brightness up and then it's more clear. So, yeah, okay. Okay, cool. Great. Um, so that's looking really good. I mean, when you're done with the, uh, down, are you doing the download thing for the images?
Yeah, images and videos, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, when you're done with that, I had a couple things I wanted to look at with these. Yeah, let me know how. And then, but also when, do you have, do you have an icon for that, for the download button? Or do you need a figure design?
Oh, yeah, I will need the figure design. Um. Yeah, I need one.
I figure we could, um. Probably just do it upside down, like the share icon, but upside down. But I'll, I'll talk to Chantel. But also, um. If you go to a, an image or a video, videos are different, but if you go, if you go to an image. And expand it.
Yeah.
Depending on the height, right? It's, it might be full screen.
Well, that's the case because I started working with the videos first. Uh, it's gonna be just overlaid there. It's gonna be, uh, like with the video was like mostly taking the whole thing. Full screen. So it's just gonna be overlaid. It's gonna be something like the, um, gonna look like the control players. With the play and, uh, what is it? Like at the top left, there's like an X and there's, um. An X to close, there's that screen mirroring. Maybe we can add something like that on the right for download.
Let me just take a look at that real quick. I'm trying to find a video. There's a lot more videos in this chat. Where is one?
I have, I have one question.
Here's one. Yeah, what's up? Yeah, what's up, Amit?
Uh, so I'm going to, Todd, Todd can test on Q A version of that, right? I mean.
Okay, it'll be done.
Is it live, is it live in QA, the deep links to streaks?
Yeah, it is. Yep.
I can contest, I'm sorry, John. Uh, and I can test in thirty-five for this, right?
Yeah, thirty-five is QA.
By the way, I'm so sorry, John. One more thing. Um, I don't have an Android that I can use to downgrade from thirty-six to thirty-five. To test this in QA on Android.
Well, this was pushed to production as well, I believe. So we contested thirty-six. Wasn't that, you, you did push that, Jerry, right? The.
Uh, we need active.
Thirty-six points for production.
Right.
And thirty-six has the changes. I mean, or on it. Right, it's. Jerry?
Everything, everything is deployed.
Okay, so you guys can test in thirty-six.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so I mean, I'm looking at the, a video and it has like the native controls, right?
Yeah, I see what there's like an X button on the left. We can do the download on the right.
I have an X button and I have. An airplane button. I guess probably because I'm on my wifi and I have a TV on my wifi. You might not be seeing that.
No, I have it too. I have it too. When I press on it, there's nothing, like the in the simulator. It's like, so. I was saying like maybe on the right side, we do the download button.
Okay, but there's a mute. There's like a little speaker button on the right. Are you saying like the right of the airplane?
No, like the right side.
On the side, not the top.
Yeah, I mean, I mean. At the top right, like here, yeah. Like it's, yeah, those on the left. Do you have mute button here?
I do. Yeah, there's a button there already.
Okay.
We could put it to the left of that.
Well, the thing is, I'm not sure if, if there's other buttons now. Because I don't see the mute button, but you do.
That's the only one. I could send you screenshot of what I'm looking at.
I felt, the reason why I went to this side is like. There will be no issue of overlaying because like, it's gonna be overlaid. If there's another icon, it might be overlaid on top of it. That's why I was like. The side is free, it's empty, then we, we're gonna be sure nothing's gonna be overlaying.
Yeah, I, I get it, except there is a button there.
Yeah, um.
And also what if the video was had white at the top? Like, would we see the buttons? You know what I mean? Like you can see them because the background's blue. But what if the?
Oh, yeah, the video was white. Think, I'm not sure what they're doing. So. So.
Is that an Apple, like native?
Yeah, yeah, this is the native. So those are the native, so.
Let the buttons go, see how there's black at the top and the bottom? Maybe they.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, yeah, I can see what's going on, so. The buttons only um appears when you focuses or press on it, so. Away, so they're visible.
I see, yeah, so the screen gets a gray overlay, so then would, would our download button behave the same way, or would it always be there?
We can, we can do it to be like uh the same way.
Actually, maybe be fine if it's always there.
Yeah, that would be easier, like uh, straightforward.
Yeah, exactly. So let's do that, but then where do we put it? I've sent you a screenshot of all the controls I see. It's pretty much everything you see except for the speaker button.
Oh, yeah, I think you know what. Um.
So, like maybe. There's not really room at the bottom, is there?
Yeah.
And you can't control what's in those three dots. That part of the.
I don't think, I don't know, I don't like so. There's only an extra text. I'm not really sure if we can.
Okay, yeah, let's not worry about that then. Um. Well, maybe the lower left corner?
Yeah, that's the one I'm thinking of.
That's the only open.
Yeah.
Okay, if we're gonna do that, let's do the lower left corner also for the images.
Mm-hmm, okay.
They're roughly the same spot. And then let's look at the images real quick because that's also similar. Potential situation depending on if it's fullscreen or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so this would be fine, but I think sometimes the image goes all the way to the bottom. I have, I seen it before, like in fact, if you take a screenshot of your phone and then share it into the chat.
Okay, um, I'm not sure how to do it from here. Yeah, um, screen. By here. Yeah.
See, fullscreen. Um. So, it's cause something else, see the X?
Then maybe you can add that um, black shadow, same how we do in. Like here in profiles. Or title to pop up, something like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay. That works. You can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Then that, that solves the questions I had. Okay, cool. Alright then, um, let me know when you're done on that and. Then I had, there was another screen, the people finder screen is what I wanna go to next.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Thanks. So Jerry, um. I know we got kind of partial update from you. Did you have anything more you wanna add or anything with Ian or Vice here?
So what? Is uh, we have a, sometimes we can get error webhooks, not webhooks, but errors from Twilio. And those don't send to our normal message webhook. They had to be configured separately. So a lot of times, this is like when we send messages to unknown numbers, we send messages. Uh, maybe they unsubscribe in some other way, but there, there's. There's mess, there's Twilio errors that don't get handled, and I created a webhook that. I went across Twilio's recommendations and they're like, okay, if you get three consecutive warehouses. With this code for this number, you can remove them from the group. And uh, if you get one, you can remove them from the group. So I went through that and um. Because we get charged if we send messages in Twilio that like.
Um, yeah, I remember reading your, your message on that, so thi- this would be the case where perhaps someone mutes. On their end.
No, not if they mute. If they um, if let's say you. You send it to a number that's been like disconnected or no longer in service. And Twilio can't deliver it, the SMS, you still get charged for it, and it's just a black hole because that number is no longer in service. So now, using Twilio's response saying number no longer in service, and I'm gonna remove them from the group programmatically. So we don't keep sending that SMS and getting charged to that number.
So that makes sense. Yeah, I never even thought of that. I'm glad you realized that. That could be happening a lot, and that would explain a lot too. Why you don't hear anything from someone for a long time, despite many messages.
Yeah.
Okay, so you would basically just cut them off after, is it like, the way I understood it, is it almost like you, you know if it's getting rejected or?
Yeah, Twilio gives me an error code of how it got rejected. Like, for example, if they say undeliverable. That doesn't necessarily mean that their number is disconnected. They said it could be a carrier related issue, but they said, but if you get about three of them consecutively for that number. Uh, just go ahead and remove them from the group. So that's the logic I have.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, so yeah, I went ahead and did that, um, but yeah, as you can see, we burned through. Bunch of Twi- anytime a group message blows up, we're gonna have. Lot of Twilio cost and that's why I also wanna bring up again. Like the, the hundred message free trial or two hundred message free trial, however we wanna do it.
What was that? Would that?
Like, when you get an external user added, that we're gonna let them interact with the group for a hundred messages.
Oh, I see, I see.
You, you used it up.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Um, yeah, I think we'll, we'll definitely zero in on. A balance. Um, right now, I think we're doing a fairly effective job of. Mitigating that cost, like especially with this catch that you made. That should help a lot, right?
I don't think it's gonna happen. I don't think that's gonna save a lot. We're still, we're still, no, I really don't, because the, we don't get that many errors. We don't get that many failed deliveries from Twilio to begin with. We get some, but I mean, we're talking, probably talking about, you know, one or two percent.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I mean, we're still, for like four hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, the cost was incredibly high yesterday.
Four hundred dollars a day?
Yesterday was four hundred. I loaded it up in the morning and it hit at eleven forty-two PM at night. And the, the risky thing about that is like unless I'm putting thousands of dollars in there, like it could. Happen overnight and then onboarding will fail because of the carrier check.
Yeah.
So either have to load up and, it doesn't take much, like it's, it's very expensive right now. You add twenty, thirty, forty users as external. To a few different chats and that could be two thousand a day.
Okay, let's break it down, Jerry, like what, wh- which ones are the biggest?
We, let me, Neverboard Club, by far.
Okay, so how many external users are in that?
Let's see.
Something's not adding up, like someone.
We ran numbers last week, it checked out.
Yeah, I, I, I was on part of that, right?
I, I think you were. We were, we were in stand-up, but uh.
Let's do it again real quick. I like this exercise.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanna figure out what's going on, like are people just lurking? Maybe?
So since yesterday. Anybody wanna guess how many messages were sent in Neverboard Club? Yes?
Yes, I went through it just now and it's a lot, I know it's.
Which I'll think, hundred?
Over a thousand.
Two hundred thousand, holy moly.
Uh, I said over a thousand.
Oh, over a thousand, oh. Two thousand, like, forty-one.
I was gonna guess a couple grand.
Yeah.
Two thousand, how many?
Two thousand two hundred forty-one messages in Neverboard Club since yesterday.
What?
Wow, well, I mean, that's cool.
That group like on fire, but you see what happens.
Yeah.
So how many external users are in it?
Let's see.
I, I know, and also, and then after that, how many have actually messaged or on-boarded?
Well, I'm gonna tell you how many external users are in the group right now, but I mean. Yeah, forty, because Zane added a whole bunch of people. Yeah, he added them all yesterday. Or somebody added a bunch yesterday.
It was Connor. So twenty-two forty-one times point zero zero eight-three. Is eighteen dollars and sixty cents per external user times forty. That's seven hundred and forty-four dollars, which is about.
They were added, okay, so they were added about later on in the day, so yeah.
Right.
That then.
How do you get to eighteen dollars per person because of two thousand messages?
Two thousand messages.
Messages and have, how, I feel like they probably.
They blocked a number, John, and if they blocked a number, then.
That's what I'm saying. How would you, would you know if they blocked it?
I do not know if they block it.
Oh, that, that's where you don't get the error. Okay, right, right, right. So that's, uh, I was hoping that's what was, you were gonna get an error on that.
No, it's like if, if number is like disconnected, no longer in service.
You have absolutely no way of knowing.
No.
Can you investigate that more? Hopefully there is a way.
It, it, it says delivered, uh, you know. I don't know what to say, but it. Yeah, it says delivered, it's handed off to the carrier and then black boxed.
Interesting.
But yeah, that, just, just that can, can make a group go crazy, like on Twilio.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't know if they blocked our number too, or marked it as spam.
Oh, that's absolutely, that's absolutely like a, a security thing, but. I, I can imagine that they would not let us know that. Because then you could imagine that if they do that, companies can have a bank of numbers and they.
Yeah.
If it's blocked, it can go to another.
Yeah, that makes sense. Cause that's what I do a lot of times, rather than replying stop as I just block the number.
Well. I bet a lot of people also do, so. That's interesting. Back when GroupMe was doing this, when we were first. Modeling after their. Um, functions, there was no, you couldn't block people like that.
I believe though, the difference that, the difference between us and GroupMe is I, I don't. I, I don't, I haven't used GroupMe that much. Last time I used it was like in high school. But it was GroupMe, at least in the context that I've used, it was like for more intimate groups. Whereas we're using it in groups that have hundreds of people in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true.
In addition, it's also not, it's not a bulletin board, like it's not, let's say you're subscribing to anything Zane says. You're getting messages for what everybody says. It's an active community. That's why it's so crazy.
Yeah, I think after a hundred messages, if you have, if you, if you haven't. Join the app, then you're not going to.
Kind of what I was thinking, and when you run the number on that, a hundred messages times point zero zero eight-three. Is uh, it's eighty-three cents per user.
Yeah.
But if we can convert one in every four people after a hundred messages, then we get to four dollars.
And only three of them have sent a message to Neverboard Club.
In what period of time?
Um, these are actually not even the people that were added yesterday, or some people Zane added. But only like three messages, like right after they were added.
From when to, to now?
These, they were added on the sixteenth, and that's when he sent their message, and that's all we got.
Yeah, since the sixteenth to today.
Okay, these are just people who have never converted over. I can run the numbers and, and try to find the people that have converted over.
From yet, from the sixteenth to today. Those who have not converted. Three have messaged, but not, but not converted.
Correct.
Okay, so obviously there's gonna be a higher number of people who did message and convert.
Right.
That I'd like to know too.
They don't convert quickly, then it starts to become a hole, a hole in our wallet.
Yeah.
And it's also because this group, y- you say a hundred messages might not be a lot for a group that gets twenty-two hundred messages a day. But I don't, I can't imagine how many groups are gonna be getting two thousand messages a day.
It's hard to say.
I mean, it, I mean, think about if it's just a, a rec sports team, they're just gonna be like, oh, you know, games at ten, not ten, you know, seven. It's not gonna be, hey, what's going on, you know, you know, hey, y'all ready for the party? Who's at the party? You there? I mean, yeah, some groups would be like that, but again, this is organizing hundreds of people where it could be. At a much smaller scale for the majority of use case.
True. Um. Do we have the ability to send a final text? Saying you're getting cut off?
I was going, I was going to volunteer to work on that today.
Okay, yeah, I think uh. You need to. Do something about it if the budget's ballooned that fast.
Yeah, and it, and it will. Like it, you know.
I was thinking the, the blocking, you were gonna be able to detect that and that would save us tremendously, but if you can't detect it.
But if, if the carrier rejects it now, now if the carrier rejects it and, and sends a rejection code, I can detect it. But a lot of the times, the carrier is just absorbing it.
Yeah.
And get to the user.
That doesn't work. Okay. Then um, yeah, let's do it.
Cool.
Okay.
Uh, can, can I get some, uh, what we had suggested is. We can change the, the messaging, that's like you've been added to a group message. Uh, we can like, let them know that it's only temporary, and then halfway, we can send them another message. And then when they're cut off, we can send them another message, if somebody can work on giving me that verbiage.
Yeah, we don't need to probably change the first one, it's already long enough. If we add too much, it'll be unread, but maybe one midstream. Um, would be good.
One at fifty and one at a hundred, if who, who would like to work on that verbiage.
I can write it.
Okay. Hey, Chantel, let's um, let's get to Figma and um, we need to give a. Download button designed to Amin.
Okay.
For downloading videos. Uh, by the way, did you, did you upload? Videos and photos in Lays Build? Everything work alright?
Um, I did not upload the videos and the photos yet. Um, I checked the other things that I was having problems with and I didn't have any more problems with those things.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so I didn't test everything. I just tested the things I last had issues with.
Okay, well, let's give that a try too, but also let's give a design to download. I'd figure we can just use like the share button, but upside down.
Yeah, let me see, I know you sent me a stack about that. Oh, okay, on the um, people finder.
Yeah, uh, no, I want, I do wanna work on that, but before that. For downloading a photo to your, to your photo library from chat. So if you tap on a photo and expand it.
Yeah.
In chat, well, I wanna.
Have the download button, okay.
Exactly, yeah, and then we're gonna do one for videos too, so let's start with the photos.
Okay.
And then um. Maybe Amit and Todd, when you guys are done testing with the notifications, let me know how that worked.
Will do.
Do um. Did we wanna kind of briefly discuss those UI change, I say UI changes, but the functionality and the front-end changes that I talked about yesterday? Standing of that, John?
Yeah, I get it. Once, once uh, one of these guys is free, I might have Sarav do it too. He, he, that would actually be a good task for him. So that'd be next week.
Um, who do I need to send this icon to?
Um, well, let's see, let's look at it on the phone as an example key share screen.
Yeah.
Cause we need to place it. And it probably needs a gradient behind it as well.
Okay, so I was looking at these, or the share button, so I didn't know if you wanted this one or this one. One's a little smaller, chunkier. Everyone's a little thinner and taller.
Yeah, probably use the one where your cursor's at.
This one? Okay, that's why I just exported.
Okay.
I haven't flipped over, so.
Okay, and then let's take a look at it on that screen.
The play video screen.
Well, also the download, there's the, just the previewing the photo too. Because sometimes, I don't know if you saw when we were demonstrating earlier, sometimes the photo is full screen.
Yeah.
That red X can be hard to see.
Yeah, where did I put that yesterday? Feel like I put it up here. Okay, yeah. Yeah. Starting on that yesterday.
Okay, yeah, so like the one on the left, for instance.
Okay, yeah, for this. Anyone download it or put a download button on it?
Yeah, let's add a background gradient gray to the bottom, so in case. Um, sometimes the colors can blend in.
Yeah, okay.
And then, yeah, and then we'll put the download on the left.
And then do you want it to go full screen? As it's full screen, like all the way?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's already doing that. I don't wanna.
Oh, well, I guess I have a bug on mine though.
Well, depends on the photo. It's, if you take.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Yeah, it might have been.
Yeah, if you touch on your phone, it'll be full screen when you share it.
Well, we want a. Like download button. And then you said like with a drop shadow?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll do download button on the lower left corner.
Lower left.
The drop shadow, all, yeah, all there with the red X, yeah, so.
Yeah, and then we'll have the gradient right down here.
Exactly.
Okay.
Bring that button to the right just a little more. It's not quite so. Against it. Okay, cool. Maybe we should even say download or save. Something underneath it, anything. Save image. Maybe we should go white.
Well, you never know if this is gonna be a white background too, but since there's this gradient, the white may not be bad.
Yeah, I think the white.
Yeah.
Little bit more. Okay, yeah, and.
And then a back button? Wait, no, cause that's what the X is.
Right. How about we say? Save underneath it.
Underneath here?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Save image?
Yeah, cause when I think save, now I think of saves.
Sure.
I think it's gonna go there.
Yeah, that's, that could be confusing. Okay, yeah, so how about, let's go save image. That's very clear.
Two lines or one?
I know, I was thinking maybe two would be better. Let's see. Um. I think that's fine. I mean, it's, it's clear.
I'll make sure. Drop shadow on that too. And drop shadow on that too. So we'll add a little more left. Okay.
Bingo. Okay, then send that to, uh, to Amin.
And probably here too, right?
Yeah, same spot there.
Hey Jerry, um, would it be challenging for you to get me an endpoint to trigger to send, um. Notifications to users to check in to tech to you when I send you the trigger?
Um.
Basically.
Just curious.
Theoretically, what I would be passing you is a user phone number. And then if the phone number, or I would be sending you a phone number, and if the, if the phone number matches a user, then we would initiate a trigger to send it front, or a app, app notice to tell them to check in.
I see. Okay, um.
We don't necessarily need it fully functional, but if I just have the endpoint at least to give tomorrow, so that he knows what the format you want.
Totally. I could, I could work on that. I'd work on that today. It shouldn't take me long. What is the SMS gonna say?
Uh, not SMS, but, um, if it is SMS.
Push, sorry, where's the push?
App, app push. Um, it's up to John. I mean, I think it's gonna be something along the lines of, um, don't forget to check in. At tech to you. I, I don't know how much we wanna add beyond that, but basically it's gonna trigger when a user has an invoice created. So it's gonna be at the final step of their service with us. We're going to run a trigger to tell them to check in.
What about thanks for? Thanks for something. Don't forget to check.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say that at first too, but it's coming from circles.
True.
So unless we said at the end of it, you know.
Circles, thanks.
From tech to you, you know, like, like somehow, we did it through circles.
Right, um.
Real quick, who am I sending this to?
To Amin. Did you put a gradient on the one on the right? Cause that will also can be a full screen.
Okay, yeah.
Hello?
Hey, Amit.
Jerry, did you receive a notification last?
Oh, um, yes. And if I click it, let me click it, let me screen. Yep, it went to a strict screen. Nice.
Uh, Tom, I'm getting error for you, like, like, well, my message is not delivering to you. Uh, it's saying you did not subscribe, or something. What's Jerry, what's saying? Did not allow push notification.
What's that on it?
So when I'm trying to send you push notification, relating, you did not allow to send push notification.
Uh, let me check. Hold on one second.
Yeah, maybe restart the app after you do that, Todd, and like maybe send some chat messages to emit, just to make sure that subscription gets activated.
Okay, will do.
While it's quiet, uh, John and Todd, I had a question about the fifty dollar discount that we're gonna do, or that we're doing now. Um, there are instances where we're gonna offer to send customers twenty-five dollars back. Um, we're, we're sorry, is it twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-five is what we're talking about.
Yeah, I was looking at my notes. Um, twenty-five is what we're gonna send them back, but if they don't qualify for that, like let's say, for example, they paid cash. Or they're, maybe they just had a free estimate, so there's no money to send them back. Um, and we give them a fifty dollar credit for a future service. I have the ability to add that credit as what is effectively a payment on file, and I can give it a payment type. So it's not a discount. It's just, it's like a gift card. It would be sort of treated that way in field three. I mean, structurally, I'm sure you guys don't really care too much how we handle it, but is that, is there any objection to it being looked at that way? Like dispatch would effectively look at it as you have a fifty dollar credit on your account.
I thought you said you made it a policy just to. Only apply the discounts when they're asked for.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, I was just thinking about this and I forgot about that part.
Which I like that strategy.
Yeah. Okay, never mind. Never mind. I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a different approach.
Okay.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Shontel, you stop sharing screen, but I wanna see, um, more Figma. I need more, I need more Figma.
Okay.
Let's look at that.
We're gonna come back billboards this morning, cause I know that's gonna take me a while.
Which was it?
The billboard?
Oh, yeah, true.
Make sure it's high resolution. So I know it's gonna take me a while, so that's what I keep going back to.
I got you. Okay, yeah, um, well, let's do this. This won't take long.
Okay.
I wanna look at the people finder screen somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, Jerry, um, one other thing to, I keep forgetting to mention this. The subscription for badge animations and, um. Friend connects, right?
Mm-hmm.
Did we, where did we, we didn't. Did we ever finish that? Uh, we were gonna, I think Amin was gonna look more.
Going to, uh, store the subscription results locally until you get out of the flow and then play it when you, I think when you get to your own screen.
Right. That has not been worked on all the way yet, has it? I mean, do you, do you remember, are you there with the subscription for badge animations? He's on mute all.
Um, can you be there?
Um, I, I keep forgetting that we were, I was gonna have you look at the, the subscription for the badge animations and the friend connect. To, um, store it. What, how did you phrase that, Jerry? Store it locally?
Yeah, store it, the local store.
Yeah, uh, no, I still haven't worked on that, but it's on my notes. Uh, I, I remember we talked about that. And I kept some of it.
Okay. Okay, that, I would say that probably be the next top priority. After the, um. Download button.
Okay.
And then we'll do this screen here, but it's not done. I'll work with Shontel on this one. But, um. Okay, cool. Do you need anything from the backend for that?
Uh, maybe I'll be having a question, a question or two to Jerry regarding the query I'm gonna be using. I want someday I'll, I'll send the question.
Okay, okay, well. Yeah, just, um, keep that in mind. We, I wanna, I wanna have that one be a top priority after this.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Amin. All right, so. The screen's coming along.
Hey, how are you feeling?
Um.
Hey, did you tell me? No, you didn't tell me to get rid of the lines.
Yeah, I think that line where it says share your link, um. I think I wanna move it. Underneath by QR code.
Okay, up here?
Actually, maybe. So is it basically gonna copy a link to your clipboard? Is that, is that the function?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's try it under the QR code.
Okay, I have, I have a question slash suggestion.
Okay.
What if, because. We don't need to be promoting GroupMe, right? Cause we've got our own group.
Well, it's not really promoting it, it's trying to.
Grab people from, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
I was gonna say, we have a link button that we could find friends from. Wouldn't necessarily be from other apps, though.
Right, yeah, there's.
So what if it said buy circles link? And we just did another thing like this, and it'd be a third one, and then bring everything else down?
Hmm. That's a pretty good idea.
Or buy your circles link?
I like the wording that Locket uses of share your, cause like I understand if I'm sharing a link. I'm bringing them here. Um. What was your wording?
Buy your circles link, cause it would be under add some friends, buy phone number, buy QR code, buy your circles link.
Hmm. Well, I, I like share, cause it's still, you can't share by your phone number or share by your QR code, but you can't share your link. So, but I do like the idea of you putting it there with the format we are using, so. Let's, let's do a combination. Make it a circle icon. Like you have, and then with that share button in there. That's a good idea. I like that. That's, that's a good suggestion. That's nice.
So I already have a different link. Button, but the other kinda link versus the share icon.
Let me see what it looks like. Yeah.
So I'm just thinking of that icon, that's all.
Right, I know. I, I like the share button one, like.
Okay.
I really like if they're, they're doing that with Locket there. Share. I like the chain link icon better visually, but. I think we'll get better result with share button. better result with share button.
Okay, um okay, how's that look?
Uh, let's see. Let's make that icon just a little bit smaller.
Okay.
A little too close to the border.
Sure.
Okay. Maybe a little smaller again.
Hello Todd.
Yeah, what's up, Bama?
Uh, I need to restart my system, it's uh since uh there's memory issue uh creating. That's why you're getting same message.
Okay.
Now, I'm running in five minutes, let me restart my system. Last one we are testing, John, we are testing last notification.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, that looks good, and then let's bring find friends from other apps, let's bring all that, everything there down, everything below it. That's good, and then go, do the same with suggestions, bring that down too. And everything below, yeah. Let's take away the little magnifying glass, where it says find friends from other apps, um let's get rid of, rid of the word find and the magnifying glass. And then center, center that text.
Oh, okay.
I wanna see that looks like centered. No, it should go left justified. Which means we should have an icon too, because the other ones don't have an icon. Um, but I don't, I don't like the magnifying glass, not really. Maybe like a little icon of like two people, like little two avatars as friends. You have an icon like that?
Sorry, um, are you thinking the bust of two people or like the two dancers emoji type thing?
No, just the bust like outline.
Okay.
Hmm, I don't like it with the pink, but I like, I liked the way you had it. With the blue. That's a nice touch. Yeah, that's, I like that. Um, and then move it to the left so it's lined up with the little stars on the suggestions.
There you go.
Okay, cool.
Is it the same color? Wow, okay. Optical illusion made me think that this was darker than that one.
It really does look darker. It's white.
Uh, no, it's that gray color. But they're the exact same color.
Are they really?
Yeah.
That's weird.
Optical illusion.
Yeah, definitely looks like.
Darker, right?
Darker, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's make the font smaller for that one. Share. All the, the share, the share your link and the buy QR and the buy phone number.
All these?
Yeah, let's make all three of those smaller.
Okay.
Yeah, that looks better. And let's bring everything where it says friends from other apps. Let's bring all that down again, a little more, a little more spacing.
Everything under? Or?
Including, including the header. I think that the search bar is throwing me off. That's not the color we use in the app. And it, and we have a different, slightly different magnifying glass. Okay, let's obviously search for a friend. And then add the back button inside there on the left. It's gonna be bigger. Maybe that's a good size. Okay. Okay. So then, the list at the very bottom underneath. Where it says show twenty-six more. I think that's your contacts, right? So, it should probably say. Your contacts or add your contacts. Take a look at some of my.